All right.
Yes.
Welcome. It is the February 5th, 2020 Holland City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and we would start with a roll call vote. Kathy, could you please call the roll?
Byrd.
President.
Peters.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Trithuie.
Here.
Arnshorst.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We're going to begin the meeting as we have for many, many years. First with an opening prayer by our city manager Keith Van Beek and then followed immediately by the pledge of allegiance. We'd love to have you stand and join us if you would.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our federal citizens. We ask for your care as we provide services to them. We ask for a particular blessing on those who are going through struggles, health, financial, and other. We ask for your wisdom this evening as we do the work of the city and as we in other times interact with citizens to do our best for your honor and glory. To your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the consent agenda. We have a number of items listed on the printed agenda with an asterisk, and those are considered to be routine and items that have been previously reviewed by council, and they will be enacted with one motion unless stated otherwise either by a member of council that would like to have them removed and placed on the regular agenda or any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and put onto the regular agenda. And they will then be considered in the normal sequence within the agenda. Those items on the agenda that are in bold are considered to be non-consent and will be voted on individually. Kathy, could you please read the consent agenda for us?
4B, approval of minutes. 4C, oath of office. 4D, written petition and communication, tax abatement, PA 198 Hudsonville Creamery and Ice Cream Company. 4E, city attorney, 25th Street Right-Away. 4F, city clerk, claims filed against the city. 4G, city clerk, 2020 Tool at Time fireworks request. 4H, city clerk, board of review, hours and salary for 2020. 4I, finance, December financial reports. 4J, purchasing, SCBA air compressor award bid. 4K, revocable license agreement, projecting sign and light fixtures, 68 West 8th Street. 4L, revocable license agreement, projecting sign and light fixtures, 64 West 8th Street.
Thank you. Are there any members of the audience who would like to have an item of the consent agenda moved on to the regular agenda? Seeing none, any council member that would like to move an item from the consent agenda on to the regular agenda? If not, then I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt agenda as presented.
Moved by Trithuie.
That's the part.
Support by Arnshorst. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, we need a roll call vote on that. Thank you.
Byrd.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Trithuie.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is public comment. This is an opportunity that we have in every public meeting for the public to speak directly to council. Please note that this is one-way communication. You are talking to council. There won't be discussion back and forth or questions answered at this time, but this is your opportunity to speak with us. We would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes per person and also ask that you limit your items to issues that are not otherwise on a specific agenda item. As you come to the podium, we would ask you to state your name and your address for the record. And also, please note that there are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light says you're doing well on time. When the yellow light comes on, that means you have one minute left, and when the red light comes on, your five minutes is up, and we are very strict about that. So if there's anybody in the audience who would like to come up and speak to council, please come forward. And of course, please state your name and address for the record.
John Fulon-Wyder, and my address is 4764 Wildwood Road, Holland, 49423. And I'm a little Johnny One Note. It's about climate change, and my comment is the CO2 levels in the atmosphere have continued to rise while Congress and the president were fiddling. Rome is burning, and it's sort of a strange thing. It continues to go up. The level is now critical. Why is it critical? Because CO2 acts like a blanket, and the earth's temperature goes up with it. And basically, we've got to stop the CO2 from going up, and this is where the critical part is. The earth needs to remain at the same temperature. It gets energy from the sun, and it heats up, but it gets hot, and so it re-radiates back, cools down, and it just stays the same. But the blanket keeps it heating up, and it's going up, up, up. We've got to stop that because it does terrible things to our climate, which right now it's very nice because it's kind of warm out and it's not what we expect during winter. Anyway, at a previous council meeting, I and others spoke about asking the city to make a statement clearly that they believe it to be a critical thing, has to be handled, and their 10-year, new 10-year plan on energy. We're kind of waiting when you can get to that. Of course, it's a one-way street, so you don't answer that yet. And I just wanted to tell you, the whole idea is to take away our dependence on fossil fuels. Well, that's a big order because it's like taking away something of value from someone who makes a living doing it. But here's the deal. The newest thing is hydrogen, and hydrogen you can get out of water. You just have to electrolyze it, which means putting two electrodes in there and water, and it boils off hydrogen and oxygen. Where do you get the electricity? From solar panels and from wind turbines. And that comes and goes, but whenever it comes high, you get a lot of stuff, a lot of hydrogen. When it goes, you don't, but you can store it. And when it's stored like that, it can be used when there's what they call dark doldrums, no wind, no electricity, I mean, no solar. And actually, America is behind the eight ball on that. Germany and France and the European nations, from what I've been reading, are getting into it in a big way, and hydrogen can be made from water. It's a limitless supply nearly. All the oceans act as a hydrogen source. And it's been done. It was done back in 2002, but it was tabled because, as I said before, Bush, the early Bush, said he wasn't going to get into the Paris Agreement. Anyway, please, Holland, let us act like a light on a hill, as they say, for the rest of the nation. This city is unique. It's beautiful. It's wonderful. And remember, we arrived on earth when we were born, and here's this wonderful earth with all the trees and everything, and beautiful. God gave it to us, and we can't remember that. And it says in the book of common prayer, "Let us be good stewards of thy bounty." And thy bounty is good air, low CO2. We can do it, and thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, John. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to council? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jim Story, 344 West 35th Street, obviously in the city of Holland, and I'd just like to give you a little update on what your Allegan County government's been up to lately, the last quarter. Pretty much the last quarter has been dominated by addressing the shoreline erosion caused by high lake levels in our county. One of our roads, Lake Shore Drive in Sogata Township, has some rather major sinkholes in it, and we will need to address that with our road commission on how to fix that situation or replace the road, trying to gain through our emergency services manager the attention of the state government to help us to do that, both from the state police, emergency services division, and the department of transportation in terms of both expertise and perhaps some funding. But it's an ongoing problem that we will, as I know many members of the council probably know, will face going into the latter part of this year and has also affected the city of Holland. On January 9th, at our very first Board of Commissioners meetings of the year, we adopted unanimously a resolution welcoming refugee resettlement in our county. We have had that for a while. A number of our citizens living in Allegan Township came to us and demonstrated some of the benefits of that, and so we were asked by Bethany Christian Services to adopt this, and we did that. We continue to implement our indigent defense office, reviewing once again that we share the only one in Michigan that's a two-county operation. We share that with Van Muren County to our south. It is going very well, but they have been busy. Unfortunately, I had the, I should say, fortunately, I had the opportunity to sit in a couple of circuit court sessions last week, and the number of offenses that are related to drug activity continue to be an unacceptably high level. And I discussed it with both the prosecutor and the sheriff, and we're not seeing it so much as a homegrown, but trafficking into the county, you know, from areas south. So we need to continue to address that, and we are. During 2019, our agricultural industry had a number of significant hits. First of all, very poor growing season because of extended water in the first half of the year, and then some of the trade-related issues that has affected the rest of the country. So those are some of the items that we're paying attention to. And finally, on personal note, I was re-elected as chairman of the board for another year, so I kind of also look out for other areas of the county other than just the northwest section. So thank you for the opportunity to be with you. Happy New Year to you all.
Great. And thank you, Jim, and congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address council? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, and we'll move on in the agenda to item 12E 4.1, purchasing, Bous Pool Sand Blasting and Painting. We have Andy Kenyon here.
Thanks for having me, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I come to you tonight with an ask to award a bid for Bous Pool to be sandblasted and repainted this summer, but before I get into the report, if it would be okay with council, I'd like to give you some fun facts about Bous Pool and what we're up to this summer.
We would love hearing that.
Perfect. So in 2019, Bous Pool saw about 13,000 visitors, 8,200 of which were children under the age of 15 who got to swim at the pool last summer for free due to some great support from individuals, families, and community businesses throughout the city of Holland and greater Holland area. So we're greatly appreciative of that. Bous Pool provides a unique place for people to cool off in the summertime, and it plays into our great quality of life here in the city of Holland. Smollenberg Park, which is just adjacent to Bous Pool, participates in the Meet Up and Eat Up program in Ottawa County. If you're familiar with that, every day at the lunchtime hour, the Holland Public Schools participates with it. They bring in lunches to kids in the area, and you can come eat for free and then head over to the pool and swim. The police department regularly visits the pool with their ice cream truck in the summer, and that's a great big hit. We open usually the first week of June. We run the pool from about noon till 8:00 PM in the evenings, depending upon weather. It's 50% for kids, but like I said, if we continue to have the philanthropic generosity from the community, kids will swim for free again this summer. It's a dollar for adults to swim and $2 for families. Like I said, the pool gives families a great place to swim and cool off in the summertime and learn how to swim. Last summer, we started offering swimming lessons for free, not for free, but through a program with the recreation department. These swimming lessons aren't competitive in nature. They provide an alternative to that for swim safety, so if you have a child or a young one that needs to learn how to swim, if they fall off a dock, off a boat, in a pool, it's a great place to do that. We'll be offering that again this summer, and all the details can be found on the recreation website through the city of Holland's page. So, some fun facts.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Now on to the report. Before you tonight, like I said, is an ask to award a bid for sandblasting and painting at Bous Pool. We're asking that this bid be given to Rivertown Painting and Construction in the amount of $49,865 to be paid for out of the Fix-It First funds within the city. You remember, back in 2017, we had similar work completed at the pool, and, ooh, I have some pictures, too. There you go. Thanks. And before you now is a picture of the dive well. That's a good example of what's happening at the pool. You can see the dark spots. That's actually where the paint has peeled off. It started to fail about mid to late summer last year and has progressively gotten worse throughout the fall and through the winter. This picture is of an expansion joint in the pool. There's a number of these. They're about an inch in diameter or inch in width, excuse me, and they're all coming apart, so this is part of the bid as well. We're asking not to go with a low bid, which typically we would do. The low bidder is the company that did the work previously in 2017, and we're asking to try a different approach this time, so we're asking to go with the second lowest bidder, again, which is Rivertown Painting and Construction. Open for questions.
All right. Any questions from council members? Yes, Mr. Trithuie.
Andy, did the former company offer any explanation or any remorse or apology or anything to what happened? They just said, "That's life"?
Yes.
Pretty much?
Yeah, pretty much. We asked about it, and we didn't get much of a response.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes, I asked about a warranty on this. Could you speak to that and also speak to, shoot, just lost my train of thought, oh, the longevity of this paint?
Sure. So, like Mr. Trithuie said, we didn't get a warranty on the last project. It's similar with this one. We inquired about it to put it in the bid specs. We were told that it should last much longer than three years, which is what we got of this last job, so we're hopeful that through some preparation work, that staff will be overseeing, that this particular product would last a lot longer than the previous one.
Ms. Arnshorst.
Andy, the last three, the higher bids are at least twice as much as the bid we are accepting.
Correct.
Is there a reason? You mentioned the last one.
Yep. So on the highest one, they were proposing to build basically a giant tent over the entire pool and paint it during the wintertime. We're not pressed to have that work done until spring. Like I said earlier, we don't open up until June, so there's plenty of opportunity before June with decent weather to get that done. The other two, it's just how they came in.
Okay.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes, I have another question regarding maintenance. If there's anything that we could have done to prevent this in the offseason or anything like that?
Not really. We've historically, for the past 40 years, done exactly the same thing, year in and year out. The pool fills up in May and June. We empty it in the fall before winter comes on, and it has survived a lot of years without having to repaint it. So we're hoping through some additional, like I said, prep work, some priming before the top coat goes on, we'll get a much better product at the end of this project.
All right. Any other questions from council? Any member of the audience who would like to speak specifically to the Bous Pool repainting? All right, I'll close the public comment on that, and I would entertain a motion in regard to this.
Motion to adopt the recommendation of taking the second high bid to repaint, sandblast, prep, and basically do all the work needed to get the Bous Pool up to shape.
All right. Move by Trithuie, support by Byrd. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Peters.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Trithuie.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is 12E 6.1, gifts. Could you read the gifts, please?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Park and Recreation, Van Ralty Farm Dog Park, Hope Academy of Senior Professionals, $100. Parks and Recreation, Sal Press Scholarship Program, cash receipts, $101. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with appreciation.
Moved by Trithuie. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, 13, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council. Kind of one topic tonight. It will be a couple different things, and with your patience, I think we also want to show you a video tonight. The larger topic is there was quite a bit of discussion and waiting of voting at your advance about citizen engagement and also discussion and compliments to our, in particular, our video team. So just brainstorming different things with that, and Assistant City Manager Vin Diken and myself thought a couple things that we're going to suggest trying. One is that in my communication that I send out every Friday, that we'll figure out a good way to have a link in there that maybe highlights a video, but really, more importantly, every week we'll make it really easy to have the link to the Vimeo page that the city has that has not only, you know, the most recent videos that our team is putting out, but that's also the one-stop location for all meetings, council meetings, and a lot of other standing committee meetings and everything. So not only do you have that right available to you easily every week, but really with that, we really encourage you, we do the best we can of always putting out those videos, and we have a pretty strong following of that. But of course, with social media, and I know a few of you, one in particular, a new person really loves his social media, really just want to encourage, and we will help train or do whatever we can, that if you pick up those videos, whether they be a long time ago or particularly more recent, that's just one more way and one more vehicle, and quite frankly, that's a way for you then to reach out to your constituency and put out that information and have that engagement. So that's one thing that we're thinking that we're going to deploy here shortly. I want to make sure that we think through that a little bit and make that as easy for you and how to do those links, and then certainly are open to feedback and any training that you might want to make great use of that. The other thing that we're going to suggest doing is that, maybe not on a night that this meeting goes really long, maybe I'll just look over to the mayor and he goes, "You know what, even a 45-second video, let's not take the time." But what we're thinking is maybe we'll just have, at the end of every council meeting, we'll just show one of the videos that our video team put out. It's just kind of a consistent, it's in front of everybody then, that we are cranking those things out all the time, and we're certainly putting them out in all of our forms, but then are encouraging you and want to enable you that you're doing the same, to engage with the community. Now, I will say the video that we're going to show tonight isn't the typical type of video, and in fact, while it was strongly supported by our video team, this is the waterfront Holland video. Again, remember, it was this group that adopted the vision and the principles and the diagram, and we talked to you at that point that we were putting together with Boilo Communications, kind of the final video that at least encapsulated the entire waterfront Holland planning process, and we thought that that made sense to be a longer-form video, not a 45-second one. So we would, I'd like to ask for the time that we go ahead and show that video now.
Please do.
Waterfront Holland was a community engagement initiative between 2018 and 2019 to formulate a vision and framework for the future of Holland's waterfront. Led by the city of Holland and the Holland Board of Public Works, and in partnership with Holland Charter Township, the process took a comprehensive, inclusive, and transparent approach to gathering public and private input. Through a year-long series of community meetings, surveys, design workshops, and tours, your ideas and aspirations have yielded a vision statement and a set of guiding principles. The vision statement articulates the character and the unique sense of place the community desires for Holland's waterfront. The guiding principles express our core values and serve as an evaluative lens for any future developments proposed near or along Holland's waterfront. Embodding these two foundational documents is the Waterfront Holland Vision Diagram, a spatial framework to steer the city's long-term development and planning policies. The framework synthesizes the four exploratory concepts generated over the design workshops, including the working waterfronts, downtown north, water penetration, and the W edge. These concepts are not mutually exclusive. Instead, they serve to capture the potential range of uses and ways in which the waterfront is layered into our community. The working waterfronts concept celebrates and preserves both our economic and environmental waterfronts along the Makatawa River system. The downtown north concept focuses on shaping the character of north downtown as a new neighborhood anchored by an artisan atmosphere on Sixth Street. Water penetration introduces blue fingers into the land by carving out community marinas and bringing the water closer to downtown. The W edge concept revitalizes the urban wedge between Eighth Street and Window on the waterfront while re-establishing the original edge of Lake Makatawa with a public promenade. The Waterfront Holland Vision Diagram highlights four key elements common to the concepts. First, the creation of three distinct districts, the anchor district, harbor district, and uptown district, also known as the north downtown district, centered around the Verplank site, the James D. Young Power Plant, and Window on the waterfront, respectively. Second, the promotion and provision of a continuous publicly accessible path along or near the waterfront that integrates the Makatawa Greenway, Heinz Walkway, and existing city parks. Third, the definition of two important intersections at Pine and College Avenue that indicate prominent points of arrival at the waterfront, and the importance of enhancing Third and Fourth Street as key east-west connectors. And fourth, improvements in connectivity to the greater downtown in terms of vehicular, pedestrian, bicyclist, and boning connectivity, as well as the seamless weaving of the waterfronts and green spaces with the broader downtown. We are grateful for your voice and your participation in shaping this collaborative community vision. To lay the groundwork for this vision, we will be working with the waterfront businesses to determine our shared interests and the possibilities, not only for their properties, but also for the James D. Young Power Plant site. In addition, we will be collaborating proactively with developers, nonprofits, and existing properties on potential projects in the three districts. To enable these future developments, the city will explore potential infrastructural investments, including roadway conversions and street extensions. It is important to bear in mind that this shared vision will be a long-term endeavor, spanning the next 10, 20, and even 50 years. As it unfolds, we will continue to pay attention to environmental sensitivity, recognize the varied yet valuable roles that the natural, public, residential, and working waterfronts play, enable meaningful public-private partnerships, and encourage intentional incremental investments Thank you for joining us on this momentous journey. As we work hard on bringing this vision to life, may our waterfront be a source of civic pride both now and in the many generations to come. To get information or to access the visioning reports, visit WaterfrontHolland.org.
So, obviously, we handled two things there, right? We did the Waterfront Holland video there, which I think was very well done, and I hope that's something that, again, that's not a video that probably is pertinent just for the next three months or six months, that's going to be hopefully pertinent for years, decades. So, we really want to kind of put that in the ground and say, okay, that's the completion of that phase, and now it gets interesting, right, as we continue to move forward and not only talk about publicly how we can take next steps, but also as we are able to now proactively deal with projects and developers and things that happen on private sites that come to us, that we have this framework in order to view those projects through that, through this lens. So, again, the intent, unless I see or hear otherwise, is that we would try to, again, not try, not show a five-minute video, right? But, we'll just kind of highlight maybe a video every time at this section in the agenda. And that's all I have tonight.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Comments for Keith?
Any report on your conference last week?
Oh, yeah. Great. What I'll probably do, it's always a great time, the, to hear what other communities are dealing with is always, of course, really interesting. Had a lot of conversations with communities about high-water issues that they're having. Quite frankly, many communities that have it a lot, more difficult than we do right now, and probably you've heard some of those stories. I think South Haven was looking at $6 million worth of repairs for their public marina. So, $200,000 that we had to put in for Pine Avenue suddenly doesn't seem quite so bad, right? So, that's great. There's always good trainings on a variety of topics. I didn't have the time this Friday, actually, I sent out my note on Saturday morning, but I'll probably just kind of give, you know, kind of highlights, I won't do a big, long paragraph or anything, but some of the trainings that were of particular interest. And I'll hit up Matt, too. A lot of times, we go in different directions to cover different sessions, so, thanks for asking, though.
Anyone else?
All right. Thank you, Keith. Communications from the mayor, I just have a couple of items. I want to highlight a few things. One, that great thing that's being put on right here by our own city staff, and then another item for people to be able to get their voices heard as well. The City of Holland's International Relations Commission, in collaboration with the World Affairs Council, is going to be hosting the Great Global Discussions at City Council Chambers beginning on February 11th. Each of these is going to be held on a Tuesday at noon from February 11th through March 31. They're going to be hosting live simulcast of the speakers. Two guest speakers from the Speaker's Circuit of Great Decisions Global Discussions will be coming to Holland and announced in the next two weeks, so stay tuned for that. The very first speaker coming up on February 11th is Raza Ahmed Rumi, the Director of the Department of Journalism at Ithaca College, and the title of his presentation is Kashmir: Flashpoint Between India and Pakistan. And he'll talk about how the escalation in Kashmir changed the stakes for the United States and the world. And for more information on that and for future discussions, you can go to the city's And then another item, a big issue coming up in the community is, we're doing an open house, and I believe that's workshop, I don't, we're going to be, think we're going to be doing a walkshop, I think that's going to be a workshop, although there may be walking involved. We wanted to invite the community to come in and have their voices be heard. We wanted to share ideas regarding the future of the City of Holland's historic greenhouses. And those greenhouses are currently located at 481 State Street, and they date back all the way to 1911, and they were constructed in phases, and right now, they're no longer needed, and we're trying to decide what the best use or opportunity is for them in the future. There are going to be two opportunities for you to engage in this. One is an open house on Thursday, February 13, from 5:30 to 7:00, right here in the City Council Chambers. So, next week, Thursday night, from 5:30 to 7:00, you can hear the story, you can offer ideas, and you can provide comments. And then, if you're looking for something exciting to do with your Valentine, you can come in for a day-long workshop on Friday, February 14, between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Nothing more romantic than talking about the future of a historic greenhouse with your loved one, and that's going to be in the City Hall Training Room upstairs on the second floor, and you can engage with the working group to explore ideas, possible sites, and possible uses. And I was a little tongue-in-cheek there, but I have participated in some of those in the past as a member of the public, and it is great to see that work in action, and believe it or not, they actually listen to what it is that you say, and you might just find your ideas showing up somewhere along in the plan. So, we really encourage people to get engaged in those. So, that's all I have. Are there any communications from council members? Well, we'll start with Lynn. Lynn Raymond?
Well, I know this is the first night that we met at 6:30, so, and I see a bunch of people came in a little before 7:00. So, if there's, I wonder if we could make an exception at the end, if there's public comment?
I would be happy to do that, yes. Yes, thank you for proposing that.
Well, interestingly, I was going to...
I guess we're going to, we're going to get, before you go there, Dave, I apologize. We're going to get, I need to get apparently an opinion from...
Yeah, I think in order to do that, you need to suspend the rules to go back to that agenda item, and it takes just a motion with a two-thirds vote to do that.
Okay. So, we'll finish this item, and then we can entertain a motion to suspend the rules. So, go ahead, Mr. Hookstra.
Well, that was my thing, man, so...
All right. Any other communications from council members? All right. Then I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move back to Agenda Item 5, the public comment period.
So, moved?
Moved by Hookstra.
Support.
Support by Arnshorst. Any discussion on the motion? And on this, I believe we should do a roll-call vote, so we make sure that we get the two-thirds vote. Could you please call the roll, Kathy?
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithui?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wonderful. Well, we're going to move back to Agenda Item Number 5, the public comment period. This is a continued opportunity for members of the public to speak to council. As I said previously, this is one-way communication. We won't be answering questions or engaging in discussion, but if you do have something that you would like to express to the council, this is your opportunity to do that. We do ask that you keep your comments to five minutes, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address for the record. Also, please note that there are three lights in the dais. In front of me, there's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means you're doing very well on time, the yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time is up, and we are very strict on the five minutes. So, if there is anyone here who would like to speak to council in the public comment period, please come forward.
Thank you, Lynn. Anne Hunrickson, 338 Royal Park Drive, Zeeland. I will be mentioning the LGBT activism. This refers to the aggressive movement that employs intimidation in forms of hate speech at anyone who disagrees with the LGBT agenda. This term is not about the people who identify as LGBT. My daughter is a transgender individual, and she opposes this kind of tactic manipulation and rude rhetoric. There are many just like her who just want to live their lives the best way they can. She does not support any ordinances or laws that silence others' religious freedoms. She states that she is protected under the law for her employment and her housing. As of January 9th, a petition was submitted to the Michigan Board of State Canvassers to approve the language for an initiative backed by the Fair and Equal Michigan Group to redefine the word sex in the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act to include sexual orientation and gender identity or expression, effectively extending those protections against discrimination. This week, the board approved the language of the petition. The LGBT+ group will need to gather 350,000 signatures in order to make it eligible for a state ballot in the fall of 2020. These signatures will begin to be collected immediately. The activism is enteredized with paid and volunteered petitioners. 2011, when the Holland City Council members were to vote on a similar proposal, the council chambers and the outside foyer were crowded with people from all over, from the state, from Detroit Wayne State to Grand Rapids Community College of the Activism. They presented the case for an ordinance. This was activism at its best. The council's vote became, came in finally at about 11:30 p.m. The votes were tied, but the city mayor, Mayor Dykstra, gave his decisive vote as a no to break the tie. This prevented the passing of the ordinance. Anger erupted. What followed for those who voted no was harassment and threats of the activism. I personally feared for Mayor Dykstra and his family's safety. Also, the downtown merchants were intimidated by a proposal to boycott anyone who did not agree with the ordinance by the activist, by an activist in Grand Rapids. Thankfully, this did not materialize. Apparently, the disappointment has not, has never dissipated. In the last election, the attacks continued to degrade Mayor DeBoer because she voted no in 2011. On November 10th, at Mayor DeBoer's last city council meeting, an activist came from Byron Center and read from a script derogatory statements about the mayor and how she had hurt the LGBT community all these eight years. It was uncalled for. Some community members stood up to not only thank her for her service, but clearly spoke to the rude behavior of the activism. 2020, any Holland City Council member who would vote no for such an ordinance would have a good reason because of the activism involved and for the repercussions of lawsuits that frequently materialize in any other municipalities who have now an ordinance. See East Lansing versus Michigan Farmer. With that form of LGBT activism, I would strongly suggest that the city council delay their vote for an ordinance in order to protect any council member who would vote no for a proposed ordinance. They and their families deserve this courtesy. It would be wise to let the Fair and Equal Michigan Group push forward with a state initiative for the 2020 ballot, which would affect all city municipalities in Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Anyone else who would like to address council? Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Jennifer Mannanen, and my address is 451 Columbia Avenue. I'm the Executive Director of Holland's Openly Secular Alliance, and I'm a humanist. I'm a nonreligious person who knows that our lives should be guided by a set of ethical principles, principles that compel us to live morally and consider deeply the positive impact we're creating. As part of that humanism, I think it's imperative that we band together to address the biggest threat to our shared existence: climate change. Experts from the United Nations and even the U.S. agree that although our time is running out, our planet can be saved, and there's so much we can do here at home in Holland. Though it's tempting to think about climate change in terms of threats it poses to humanity, I think it's time to change how we approach this topic. Let's start talking about how and why, as a society, we should move in a cleaner, more renewable direction. Let's talk not just about who is affected by climate change, but what could actually be done and give more space to people of different, who have concrete policy proposals in mind. Environmental policy covers a wide range of different proposals, including pollution taxes, subsidies for renewable energy, conservations to preserve important landmarks like our beautiful Lake Michigan. Let's move from discussing the impact of undeterred climate change to focusing instead on what measures can be taken as individuals to push for greater climate justice. It's only through this personal and collective action that we can address this crisis, and that action starts with this council. Let Holland be an example to Michigan, for the United States, and to our world. Experts agree that although time is running out, we can still save our planet, and our local leaders here have the power to do that by, to help extinguish one of the biggest threats of our continued survival by implementing the Community Energy Plan. Only humans can save ourselves from the climate crises we created. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. And could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Andrew Bissardi. I'm from 10278 Linwood Lane, Zeeland, Michigan. Good evening, council and mayor. I am a 2003 graduate of Holland High School, Go Dutch, and I'm also a minister in the Reform Church in America, serving in the Reform Church in America Denominational Office. I come here today representing the Holland Area Faith Leaders for Justice, and I would like to also speak to the reality of climate change. Holland has a history of environmental responsiveness, seen as recently as the video shown a little bit earlier, that even as we develop our economy, we also are sensitive to our environment. However, communities worldwide are having to step up because of the urgency of climate change. The World Council of Churches, the largest ecumenical body of Protestant churches on the planet, recently made a statement that said that the time for debate of the scientific validity of climate change is long over, and that time for action is swiftly passing. Indeed, the General Secretary of that same body, Olav Tveit, quoted, "Evidence suggests that it may not be too late to avoid or limit some of the worst effects of climate change if we act collectively with responsibility to save Planet Earth for ourselves, our fellow creatures, and generations to come," end quote. The General Secretary and the World Council of Churches were responding to a report that came out in November of 2019, that around 11,000 scientists from 153 countries signed, stating that we are in an unequivocal climate emergency. Mass deforestation, air pollution, destruction of habitats, and the resulting biodiversity, in fact, are all affecting our climate as it stands. The ebbs and flows of climate that we have been able to measure for centuries are turning into dramatic shifts that we see even here in Michigan. We and Faith Leaders for Justice, a coalition of leaders in faith and non-faith communities, trust the scientists, and we trust the sciences. We also reach into our own traditions, you just heard from the humanist tradition, of which I am deeply grateful. The Jewish, Christian, and Muslim traditions also turn to Genesis 1 and 2, saying that humans are responsible for Earth. Christians have also a passage in the Book of Revelation stating that cursed are the ravagers of the earth. This is a sentiment echoed in the Quran in Sura 30, that our actions are corrupting the land, but we can always turn back. Indeed, our growing Buddhist community in Holland draws inspiration from the Dalai Lama, who says that our planet is our house, and we ought to be concerned about it for ourselves, our children, other sentient beings, and indeed, generations to come. And it's this quote that ultimately drives me here. It's about loving our neighbors. Indeed, Faith Leaders for Justice is united not by our dogmas, for those are incredibly varied. We are united by our love for neighbor. Climate change will affect our farmers who feed us, our fresh air, our clean water, and our access to food, and it is the poor and the marginalized who often face the effects of climate change first, and our various traditions lead us to care about such things. Our religious bodies and nonreligious bodies are working together to educate and to take action to limit their own climate footprint, whether it's changing the way we heat our often-too-tall steeples and sanctuaries, or whether it's educating through various classes, whether it's starting recycling programs, or even what's happening across the nation as churches are using... as churches are using those tall steeples and installing solar panels to help the shift to renewable energy. Communities across the country are moving toward helping, but we all must do this together. These conversations are often difficult because they jump immediately to solutions that lead some to be afraid of government overreach or apocalyptic thinking. Today, I urge you to do just two things, and you can always tell an optimist by someone who trusts a preacher who says "finally." But I encourage you to think of two things. One, to issue a statement acknowledging the reality of climate change and determined to take action through education response. And two, to update our Community Energy Plan to respond to the urgency highlighted by our most recent sciences. And with that, I thank you, council, and thank you, mayor, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Andrew. Is there anyone else here who would like to address council? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Ben Lim. My address is 230 South State Street, number 139, in Zeeland, Michigan. I am part of the Faith Leader for Justice as well. We have been discussing about this environmental issue, climate change. We seems to be living here in this area where climate change is not so obvious. People so oblivious about the impact of climate change. So, people seems to not care very much about it. But think about it, I'm, I'm from Indonesia. Indonesia is an island nation. Right now, people are scared about the climate change. They started having a project now to move the capital city of more than 10 million people from Java to Borneo, because Jakarta is sinking. So, uh, we should stop thinking as American, but we should start thinking as a global citizen, you know, to care about other people, you know? So, uh, I want to speak today more in general term, beyond the issue of climate change, though. It is not that some people don't care for our natural resources. The problem is that they systematically and selfishly exploit them for their own short-term benefits and expecting others to deal with the consequences. Reverend James Lawson once said about slavery, that the problem, white people in power, uh, was not that they didn't like black people, but they liked them, to systematically exploit them. I was raised to respect people, to help others, and to welcome people and perspective of different than my own experience. I was fortunate, but my upbringing, uh, left, left me often with an instinctive resistance to assume the worst of people's intention. It is hard to accept the idea that people are willing, willfully screwing other people over. The impact of an action or, or decision, often systematically hurting others, and certain groups are blamed as the primary culprit. It is very difficult to people, to prove others, that other people, it is very difficult to prove other people's bad intention. All they have to do is deny them and say that they don't care, they don't, they cannot see into another people's mind. It is problematic to refuse to see willful intent to commit evil. It is far outside many of the usual everyday experience. But for many minority groups, it is something that they, they see every day of their lives. It is actually not hard to be evil. Just feel nothing concerning the consequences one's decision will have for others. Education and raising awareness is not enough to respond to the problem. We need a conversion of the heart, a born-again transformation in how people see themselves and others. That cannot, that cannot be forced. You can lead a horse to the water, but you cannot make them drink. You can give someone all the information of, in the world, but you cannot make them feel empathy, remorse, and compassion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Is there anyone else here who would like to address council?
I may move slow. My mother-in-law's funeral was last weekend, and I inadvertently threw my back out.
Oh.
A grandchild. So, I'm not able to correct it. Okay. Uh, Bob Ashby, uh, 96, almost forgot, 967 Songbird Lane, where I live. I would like to address the idea, um, that Holland City Government is responsible for protecting specific sexual lifestyles. One har, uh, one of the harms claimed is that government should not regulate the LGBT community. The reasoning here is based on the faulty assumption that if the gay community does not specifically have guaranteed privileges, they are being regulated. Uh, LGBTQ citizens are not regulated, nor is their behavior any more regulated than any other American who practices their civil rights. Uh, gays are not registered, they're not required to report their activities, they're not denied public services based on their sexual behavior. The only possible regulation is the institution of marriage, which the Supreme Court now has opened to, to same-sex couples, thereby redefining the institution as it has existed since the beginning of civilization. It is said, secondly, that the gay community is singled out for harassment and bullying, and therefore in need of protection. But in reality, harassment and bullying are already regulated, as Anne mentioned, through stalking and assault statutes, as well as through the right of private civil litigation. Hate crimes laws add another layer of protection in criminal cases. The net effect of hate crimes law is, of course, really a prosecution for the same crime twice. There are, there were, as a matter of fact, even though LGBTQ activists claim the FBI's crime stats show a high rate of offenses based on sexual orientation, and that even one crime is too many, the accurate stats derived from the FBI's 2018 Annual Crime in the US report demonstrates a much different situation. There were approximately 8.4 million crimes reported to the FBI in 2018, including property crimes. Of the, of that, there were approximately 5,856 crimes against persons reported to the FBI, but only 11, or only 1,067, excluding those against heterosexuals, were based on gender bias. If my math is accurate, that is, that is a little over 3/10,000 of 1% of all the violent crimes in the nation. Holland is a city of approximately 33,400. This means that if the 3/10,000 of 1% is applied as a measure of likely crimes against, uh, sex, uh, based on sexual orientation, our city could expect about 1/10th of a person every year, or about one person every 10 years, to be a victim of that. The problems of aggression, intimidation, bullying are within the LGBT community itself. Rates of domestic violence, both psychological and physical, are more, are in most situations significantly higher than heterosexual relationships. The city, the citizens of Holland are not the problem. Think of the culture we live in now. Hallmark Channel has run ads on Fox News Network, featuring a lesbian wedding. Gay pride flags fly freely in our region, and our region has multiple public-accepted, well-established vocal advocacy and support organizations. In reality, if you are an employer, just try firing someone for who they have sex with. Where is the, where is the problem in the city of Holland? That is, after all, where the council's responsibilities actually lie. I do not relish having to speak of the issue of harms from the LGBT community lifestyle, but gay activists force the issue. This is not a matter of heterosexism, hate, fear, ignorance. It is a question of where harms to the commu, the LGBT community actually originate. Substantial harm to any specific group of citizens, whether by government action or lack thereof, is a significantly different problem than solving harms which are endemic to the behaviors of the community itself. Government is responsible for its own behavior toward its citizens, not for the internal liabilities of all society's subgroups. The current thinking seems to be that the LGBTQ lifestyle is harmless, but abused and discriminated against in Holland. This supposed situation requires government...
Mr. Mayor, that's five minutes.
Action!
Thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? Please come forward.
Chris Bennington, 59 West 19th Street, Holland, Michigan. Thank you for changing your agenda and allowing us to speak. Um, I really love the city of Holland, so, two things. One is, I would love it if Holland did implement protections for the LGBTQ community. Second, uh, I, I love the Ho, I love the fact that Holland has a Community Energy Plan. Um, I think it's a beautiful thing. I know that it puts us ahead of the curve of a lot of other cities in the United States. Um, I can attest to some of the other comments that were made about the impacts of climate change around the world. Uh, I'm a, I'm a minister ordained in the Reform Church of America, and I work for the Christian Reform Church with an organization called World Renew. We have, uh, community development projects in over 40 countries, and in many of those countries, the impacts of climate change are already being felt. Um, but I live right here in Holland, and so what I can do is do my part to reduce my own carbon footprint and raise awareness among my, among my neighbors and among my own government. Um, and I live here in Holland, and everything that I do, when I turn on the light standing in this room, it's all contributing to my carbon footprint. One of my close coworker friends is from Costa Rica. She, uh, always tells us that when she goes home, it's a lot easier to reduce her carbon footprint, because carb, uh, Costa Rica's energy grid is almost carbon neutral. So when she turns on the lights, it's not, it's not, it's not emitting carbon energy. I would love to live in a city of Holland that gets all the way to that point someday. Um, I plan to live here as long as I can. My friends who I work with in the Grand Rapids area say, "You should move to Grand Rapids," but I love living here in the city of Holland. The reason that I care most about this issue is that cutie back there. Uh, what we do here in the city of Holland, as we, as we look at the waterfront programs, as we look at energy programs, it's for, it's for those folks, right? Those cute kids running around our neighborhoods. Um, what we decide with the Community Energy Plan is going to affect the next generation more than it affects us, right? So, we've got to be thinking of the next generation. We took an awesome step ahead of the curve, and I thank the city council for being parts of those steps as well, to implement the Community Energy Plan, and I hope that we will take next steps as well. One final thing, um, World Renew has a project called the Climate Witness Project. Many churches in Holland are a part of it. There are over 50 churches in West Michigan who are a part of it, a couple of churches right around this neighborhood who are a part of it. These are all churches who have made a commitment to do what they can to reduce their energy footprints, and to do what they can to, um, raise awareness amongst their own constituency and in their, in their own neighborhoods. So, your houses of worship in Holland are on top of this issue, and they also, uh, really want to see a city that is taking steps to reduce our carbon footprint as a city. So, if the Community Energy Plan can take a next step, that helps, that helps those churches also to be further along in their steps, since they're on the grid with the city and a part of the city, um, with the rest of us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Uh, and I believe that just leads us to one final item on the agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Tuthui, is there support? Support by Peters. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.